Greetings, everyone. It's just after 6:00 PM, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Let's establish that we have a forum, please, beginning with a roll call vote. Juan Carlos?
Here.
Christopher?
Here.
Meredith?
Here.
John?
Here.
Corby?
Here.
And Joe?
Here.
And I am here as well. We do have a forum. Corby, has this meeting been properly known as?
It has.
Thank you. To have ensured that we're centering our boardwork around our shared values and serving our students, we begin each of our board meetings by reading our district's equity framework and the Ho-Chunk Land Acknowledgement, which can be found at the top of the agenda. Meredith, could you be willing to read those for us this evening?
Absolutely. In the Bruna Area School District, our mission is that each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. To meet this mission, the Bruna Area School District will ensure that every individual has access to the educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel valued and affirmed in their unique identities and experience. We acknowledge that inequities and power dynamics exist in our system such that some individuals, on the basis of their identities, face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. And acknowledgement of such, the Bruna Area School District is committed to disrupting these systems of inequity. And our Ho-Chunk Land Acknowledgement reads, "There are currently 12 tribal nations who call this comes a home, with the Ho-Chunk Nation being the primary group living around Madison. No matter where you are in the state, you are on the ancestral land of a tribal nation." As we begin our meeting, we honor the land upon which we stand.
Thank you. Board members, I'll draw your attention to the remainder of tonight's meeting agenda. Any questions, amendments to tonight's agenda? Otherwise, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Sure.
Thank you, Juan Carlos. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christopher. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda as written, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. So we will move right away into our superintendent's report and get some updates about the fact that this is the first board meeting since the school year has started. So yay!
Absolutely. Thank you so much. You're welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming yesterday. Again, officially, the kickoff of the '25-'26 school year. It's just been an amazing start due to the dedication of our staff and our building leaders. And thank you to the board for setting the tone with our policies. Our, excuse me, our, not motto, I don't want to use that word. Our mission this year is to build a legacy of excellence, and we brought that to life during our convocation, and during which we had a group of speakers that really focused in on helping our staff appreciate the power of their impact through education as being a part of the legacy of excellence. We focus on bringing alumni back into alumni focus so we can understand the impact of service beyond our graduation and how they impact so many into their careers and beyond. With that, we were able to share the stage with a multitude of speakers, including representing the Board of Education, Corby White and Jen Murphy. Thank you so much for lifting up the spirits of our staff. We were joined by Dynamic, I want to call her a student because she's a graduate alumni, but, and she, just kind of a credit to the experience she had in the Bruna Area School District and the impact of staff. She is an emerging special education teacher at Edgewood College, will be doing her student teaching this year, and would love to see her one day as a Wildcat to join us back with Delaney. And additionally, we were graced by the governor of the great state of Wisconsin, Tony Evers, who continued to give the message of his mission of ensuring that there's a world-class education across the state, but having him on the stage to reaffirm the work of the Bruna Area School District and that continued commitment and him being a part of the alumni himself and also having great kids in our system just really added to that phase. Our keynote that day was Ryan Hack. Ryan acknowledged some of the impactful educators that influenced his life. If you haven't read his book, please take the opportunity to do so, but his focus on inclusion and how despite having a disability in the form of a 1R never was felt excluded and we think about our focus on ensuring that diversity, equity, and inclusion lives strong in Bruna Area School District. He brought that message to life with clear examples and just a lot of cheers and a lot of tears in the same message, but really a powerful day. If you haven't had the opportunity, it was recorded on Fact TV. I think we can pull that up at any time if you weren't able to join us, but we want to thank everyone who participated in the event and what it meant for our staff to come together in unity around the common message of building legacy of excellence. So thank you all for the great work.
Thanks to the team for all the behind-the-scenes organizing this really awesome way.
So the momentum we carried over to each of the buildings and our focus was really on five primary areas when our staff went back to the buildings. Obviously, beyond the commitment of having a top-tier educational experience, it's ultimately our responsibility to make sure that every student and staff member is safe. So we really went deep into our standard response protocol, safety training. We have changed some of our, adjusted some of our systems this year, but really wanted to put that at the forefront of training to ensure that every staff member was prepared, every leader knew what to do, and we had systems that were completely set to ensure that every child that comes to us also goes home safe at night, and we want to continue that commitment. From there, we transitioned into standard-based teaching and learning as part of the continuous improvement plans, and then launched, which we found to be very successful and want to continue to work, our professional learning communities, followed by, and many of you are able to see, we're able to see in the spaces and your role as parents of family contexts and evening events sponsored by each of the sites. So really a powerful week. A lot happened in one week, or...
Partially.
And a partial week of that in four days, but thank you for everyone. Yous behind the scenes loosely because you're really out in the forefront with just transportation, food services, all of our major educators, the custodians of buildings and grounds, that on top of the normal summer cleaning, multitude of projects, and trying to get everything ready to go. So thank you to everyone that's involved in allowing us to kick off the school year and a lot of smiling faces. And the students, students are really happy to be back and happy in the presence of our staff. So we'll close it with that and answer any questions or specifically about the welcome back or anything that was accomplished.
Board members? Lots of smiles in our house.
Excellent.
Yeah. Laid back, slide through the years, feeling good. Thanks to all the educators, everybody that you acknowledge that is just making this school year just, yeah, feels like great energy.
All right. So thanks as part of this report, we'd like to bring the New Century Bruna Area International Principal and Governance Council members to the table for a presentation to the board seeking an addendum to the contracts for each of the sites for New Century Bruna Area International Schools. So just glad you'd like to bring them to the table.
Welcome. Yeah. Well done. We need some more chairs. Yeah. Slide some chairs over.
Thank you for letting us join. I am Sally Parks, the principal director of both New Century School and the Bruna Area International School. And I'll let our small and mighty team introduce themselves and their roles, too.
Hi, I'm Kelly Paster. I am the Governance Council President at New Century School.
I'm James Koppel. I'm the Governance Council President at Bruna Area International School.
I'm Mady. I'm Governance Council Member at Longtime. Yeah, Longtime. Longtime New Century.
All right. And we're coming with you today. Cool. Thanks. Okay. Our system's always on batteries or something, so. So we're coming with you today to share, to ask about an addendum to our charter contracts. And basically, what we are asking for, this is a conversation that started with figuring out ways to help our staff find more time to dig deeper into each individual charter mission, vision, and educational program, which is very specific and different for each of the charter schools. However, both communities were having some similar experiences of needing more time, especially with the implementation of SAVIS curriculum for English, Language Arts, and some of the other pieces that we're working on. It was a little less time to focus specifically on the charter. So one of the things that both staff and the Governance Council have, are asking for and are supportive of is adding an additional professional development day to both the New Century School calendar and the VAS school calendar, similar to what Core does. And Core does two days a year where they do not have students, and they spend that as professional learning focused specific to their initiative. We are not asking for, we are not planning to do two, three days. We're planning to do one this year, if possible. However, when we were comparing the contracts, we noticed that Core Knowledge does have two days, so we are asking for two days to be added as an option to the contract, not that we're planning to use them. Our, we also, so that would bring us in alignment, all three of the charter schools, and we're asking that that amendment would last the remainder of the charter. Each school has different lengths of charter left. And then, we did consult with Core Knowledge of it and how they have made this successful and how they thought about it. One of the biggest things, suggestions that they had was to make sure that we aligned the day with already a long weekend. They said that families really prefer that because they're already making some arrangements. If their caregiver or grandparent is coming in to help out, oftentimes it's easier for them to come once and stay that full-time, or if they're traveling, that type of thing makes it easier for them. We also really wanted to focus on doing this in the second semester so we could really think about curriculum design for that semester. And we also thought doing it in January, and our proposed date is January 16th, would allow for additional time to communicate with families and make sure that we get that word out. Okay. So I work global learning and development for a tech company, and I know how hard it is to have time to plan cross-functionally. And so one of the big pain points that our staff have communicated is just that lack of time. And we've noticed that some of the most impactful activities that we've done at New Century have been when we are able to integrate the bigs with the littles. So the bigs have an opportunity to teach and lead just as much as the littles have to learn, and then they're learning from each other. So it's really about inclusive teaching and learning and giving everyone an opportunity to play those roles while learning about the importance of STEM or STEAM, we could be at the end for environment. Next slide. So specifically, we're really hoping that the teachers can all get together, not just the two staff that lead each level, but all of them across different levels to plan some really cool activities, maybe even do some planning with Earth Day, which is a big event for us that involves the community, staff, and school itself. And...
I don't know how familiar you are with the model at Bruna, VAS. There, each grade level has two teachers, and they're grouped together, kindergarten first, second, third, and then fourth, fifth. One is an English teacher, one's a Chinese teacher. They, particularly with the changes in curriculum over the past year, it's, the need has been there to just kind of align what they're doing to match what Mandarin curriculum is doing, bring them up to the standards that we're seeking there, as well as meeting the social studies and science standards that are needed for all the students in English The, we would like the professional development time so the teachers can work together, collaborate, working on both the curriculum mapping for bilingual literacy issues, as well as reflecting on what has been, how things have worked over the fall semester, to see where adjustments can be made to really work on keeping those targets going forward.
In terms of family communication, the Governance Councils had conversations and approved this in spring of last year, so some of our families were obviously aware of that included in that. I also shared a communication with families on August 8th that this is a tentative, possible, could happen, want to make sure you're aware of this. I've only gotten positive feedback. I have not heard any concerns, which actually is kind of surprising. So we made sure we had a pretty vigorous plan if we go forward. So depending, I did let families know whatever the decision is this evening, that I would share that out with them this week. And then, if it is approved, then we would add it. And Mercy was great in helping me think through and see if there were any other ideas she had to add for communication. We'd add it to our school calendars. I will say our families are pretty used to checking our school calendars because we do have a lot of special events. We would share it in our family newsletter. Both NCS and VAS have Facebook pages. We would also make sure that we would send reminders the week and day before, January 16th. Both schools have fall community gathering where lots of families attend, so we would make sure to share that out in that space and setting, hang posters at our entrances and offices throughout the fall, especially if we have special events, we would look to mention that. And then also look at doing a pop-up message on our websites starting on January 14th, kind of like we've seen, just a reminder, it's Labor Day, just a reminder, VAS or and/or New Century will not be having school on Friday. So that is our plan around facilitation. So happy to answer any questions.
So in terms of the administration may be wondering what our stance is, we, not just because they're here today, but we do believe that in twofold, that there should be continuity among the three charters and have some real language there. Second, we do know and understand that we want to provide a deeper professional learning opportunity for staff, given that there are uniquenesses to each of the curriculums that are very special to the charter itself and to the ways of working. So we think about a commitment to our literacy focus, whether it's through SAVIS and our deep math focus as well. We still want to keep the science component deeply embedded, and we also want to have the language acquisition still deeply part of it, where in that sense, just deeper time to be able to work in longer chunks or longer periods of time. We do have the PLCs, which are short snapshots, you know, of our commitment, so they still have that. But when you think about really going deeper into curriculum, sometimes you have to just go longer and deeper and do a half-day or full-day to allow that to fully happen. So that is our thoughts on it, but again, this is, would definitely be a board decision as it was as part of the contract, it would need to be an addendum to that contract.
I just wanted to comment that I appreciate you reaching out to families prior. That was giving my question before I hit the slides, so good job of answering that one. Thank you for that.
This is one of those situations where I think the board's here just as like the official blessing because we have parents and staff and administration all along, and so thank you for coming and sharing just the update. It's been pro forma for us. Like, it's kind of your thing, and so we appreciate you coming in and, you know, I have more objectives to do, obviously.
Just a clarifying question, especially given what we're being asked to formally approve as board members, right? In fact, the fact that this is an addendum to the contract. So there is already language that allot's for one day?
There, no.
There is not. Okay, so that was, okay, so that was the piece that I had, for some reason, I had thought there was one, and you were looking to have it be up to two. So the language is going to change to be up to two. You're thinking this year, the proposal will be the January 16th, just perhaps just the one. Yes. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. And I want to reiterate, too, I think, right, there is the semantics or the legalese of us being the approving body for some of these changes. I appreciate kind of the uniqueness, the rarity of this, being able to come to the table in a situation like this that it elevates work for staff, which indirectly helps kids, and that it does, to your point, Dr. Pear, to align our charters, which feels like the right thing. But great to hear the updates and the intention behind the work.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that's the important part of this, is making sure our, all three of our charters are aligned in how they handle things like professional development. That's why this makes total sense. I'm concerned not about the specific here, I'm totally fine if this is a good idea, but the idea of our contract, our charter contracts being kind of open for negotiation at all times. So I'm hoping we can kind of consider this a one-off alignment, let's get everybody together, and not, you know, the start of lots of requests from charters.
All right. Administration, definitely fully agree.
Thank you. Any further questions for board members? We'll be taking a vote shortly. We want to open things for public comment before we do so, so just ensuring there are no other questions we have for this amazing team. Thank you for your time, by the way, for coming to present. We look forward to taking our vote in a few moments. All right. So with that said, formally moving through the agenda, we are to our public comment portion. I am not aware of any, Lori, anything I've missed. Okay. So then with that said, we will then shift to our board action, first of which is taking our formal vote. So board, we've been able to hear about the proposal from our team here about the charter school contract amendment that will list up to two professional development days that will adjust and exist through the duration of both charter school current contracts. So I'd expect, accept a motion to approve the contract addendum proposal as proposed. Thank you, Meredith. Is there a second? Thank you, John. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor of approving the charter school contract addendum proposal, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Yeah, addendum is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hope the staff can just, it feels so good to know that that day is going to be there for your staff.
Yeah. They are.
Yeah. Great, very great. All right. Board, moving on then to our second piece of board action. So we do have in front of us a more fanciful copy of our '25-'26 budget hearing and annual meeting. So we have heard details and an overview of this at our last meeting. We've had time to kind of live with this document. So tonight, there's no additional presentation, but just a few reminders for you all and kind of the sake of the community, you know, our budget proposal that's living here is certainly an investment, again, in staff. We've worked at length and thanks to our budget team to really try to elevate and take care of our staff financially, given the budget that we're working within. We have a balanced budget. We are monitoring staffing reductions and really trying to honor the FTE shifts within the district to work within our budget, healthcare savings, and also, again, to just highlight, we're still trying to really work through mill rate and property taxes that are reflective of a multitude of variables, including new construction, including higher property values, all of the things. So the mill rate is still looking to be one of the lowest to spend in two decades. So just a couple of highlights to reiterate. After tonight's meeting, these books will be available at Central Office, a few copies for anyone in the community that'd like to have a tangible copy to look at. This will also be posted online after our vote this evening, and then we'll go through formal improvements of all budgetary items coming up at our next meeting on the 22nd, where we'll have our annual meeting and budget hearing. Actually, I captured a couple of the high-level things. Anything else that anyone would want to just surface now before we take our vote?
Just to clarify, so right now, we're the board approving, presenting this budget, bringing it forward to the, you know, annual budget meeting. We're voting again at the annual budget meeting, but we're not voting as the board, we're voting as citizens. So we will be voting now as a board to advance it, and we will be voting again in two weeks as individuals, as part of the community.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, thank you again to Chad, Pete, the entire finance team, all the leadership folks that are within this.
Community team helped make it through.
Yeah, yes, yes, they did. Hard, hard.
It was, uh, we're the charter grass crew and the color.
But in all reality, right, visually, but understandable as well, right? I think the combination of just language, how it's written, how it's presented, just makes it very digestible, incredibly informative. So for community members that really kind of appreciate that deeper dive and understanding, this is such a great resource. And we try to do what we can at board meetings to elevate a level of understanding of school budgets, but it's a very complex entity. All right. So as Meredith said, tonight, as board members taking a vote to move this forward to the budget hearing and annual meeting, so I would accept a motion to approve the budget book as presented, the preliminary annual budget, to move on to that meeting.
Sure.
Thank you, Christopher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Juan Carlos, just by a hair. All those in favor of approving the '25-'26 preliminary annual budget, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Preliminary annual budget is approved. Look forward to the 22nd, and reminder to community, it is open. Anyone here, as Meredith said, is equal citizen and equal parts voting as a resident of the district. Moving on to our third piece of board action, so board members, there is a document linked in Board Docs, and there is one in your pile of goodies. So looking at our GC6 policy, where we review the annual work plan, and also just for reference, a hard copy of our current working document of our annual work plan is also there for you to see. The language in GC6 under item number one had stated that the annual planning cycle will end each year in October. We've had a few of these kind of GCs as we've gone through when we originally wrote these policies that were maybe a little bit more defined than we might perhaps even need or realizing where our work really lives. So there is a proposal here to change that language as reflected in the change of color, that it would say the annual planning cycle will be revisited each year to allow the superintendent to properly align internal operational systems and processes. So this is being brought to the table as a first read for conversation, dialogue, questions, wonderings, thoughts.
Makes sense.
It's pretty straightforward. Right. Nothing earth-shattering, but certainly want to be able to live our GCs with enough integrity, and if that isn't happening necessarily in October, you know, it's not that it's wrong, but it isn't reflected in our policy as perhaps we'd like to have. So given that this is a first read, we have time between meetings then. If you do end up thinking of something, questions, concerns related to this change, but otherwise, we'll bring this back at our next meeting to do as official second read and then take an official vote to shift the policy language as presented. Okay. Great. Moving on, board updates. What do we have, board? The start of the school year, just kind of the Start of the school year, just kind of the thing to talk about. I think we've shared previously, there is the Wasby Regional Conference on Tuesday, September 30th. I believe you all get the Wasby emails that have that, so please feel free to let me and/or Lori know about that. Thank you. And I will be at the September 30th for sure to have representation for our district. We have Greater Dane County, next consortium meeting is on Thursday, October 9th. Remind me your location.
Mass Metropolitan Holtzman.
Oh, Holtzman. Holtzman Learning Center. And that, I believe, is on everyone's calendar. But again, just for the sake of RSVPs and noticing, feel free to let Lori and I know if you plan to attend. What else? Wasby Convention in January, already timed to make sure you're communicating about possible attendance there. Anything else?
Board update, but.
But an update?
Yes.
Sure.
The Wasby committees were announced last Thursday and I was fortunate to be placed on the Wasby Legislative Committee to be able to represent our area of legislation. Okay, so I did. We are able to submit where we think we got more, most impact. We do that the spring before, and then they provide the announcement of who's assigned where in the following fall. So we're on their tradition to be represented on the legislative committee as of last Thursday.
Wonderful. Can you say more about your position represents which geographical area or is it CISA? CISA, okay. Great. Thanks for sharing that. Thanks for serving in that way. All right, moving on to our superintendent's consent agenda. Board, just make sure you looked over what's listed there. Are there any questions? Hearing none, the superintendent's consent agenda is approved as presented. Moving on to board consent agenda, taking a peek, there are two items listed there. Any questions about the board consent agenda?
Can we just clarify that the hockey part, that's just a, again, one of those requirements that we have to approve. We will not go to approve that. But I think like it should be, if you're seeing it in the agenda, that's just, is it annual? Is that different than the year?
Two years.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a two year. Yeah. I mean, I think there's interesting layers that, you know, exist within the world of discussing athletics, especially in terms of growth hockey and growth within programming. But at this point, from the vantage point of the board, obviously the expertise and analysis about that is, I know, beyond my scope and we have an amazing athletic director to help give us those insights. So at this point, I agree that that's why it's a consent, that it really isn't a board topping, but it is a board decision to approve.
In my real update, can I go back one to the board? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. We haven't taken our votes, so I'll make sure. Or can we wrap up board consent? Okay, let's do that then. Any additional questions about the board consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, the board consent agenda is approved. And then you've got something that's just.
Yeah, I just really, I just wanted to get the timing because we got notice of this, but we're honored to be able to do this. And if board members are interested in being present, I think that's okay. We just were informed that the NDA Secretary Treasurer Noel Candelaria, am I saying that right? Will be at University of Runery High School tomorrow afternoon. Will be there, joining other staff for, on a national back to school tour. Be joined by RIAC President Peggy Works, also with a photographer and other members of Runery School District staff. You know, it's in collaboration with our unions, you're represented, it's extremely important. So we're honored to, they will be joining us here, but just wanted to get this out as we got notice, short notice, but it's good to be joining the Runery School District.
Yeah, that's great.
Marsha, thanks for hitting me with this real quick.
Wonderful. Thanks for letting us know. Yeah, wonderful. A celebration of the work and the collaboration of our union's leadership and the hard work of our union representatives. Thank you. All right, moving on to future dates. So board members especially also, reminder then that on the 22nd, our annual meeting and budget hearing will be at 5:00 PM and immediately followed for our regular board meeting. So ensuring that your personal calendars reflect that we will be starting at 5:00 PM and again, open to the public. And then regular board meetings just listed to follow. And then we'll move into board workshop. So hopefully at the top of your inbox, I know I saturated your inbox a little bit over the past 24 hours. There is a working document, this is also printed and in the pile next to you. If you recall, when we did our analysis and revisited OE3 recently in terms of monitoring operational expectation three, that 3.1, due to a data breach that did happen, we kind of wrangled with this idea of having a particular indicator or portion of an OE being not in compliance by the language that is reflected in the policy. But then what does that mean for our overall conclusion about the OE as a whole? And especially that operational expectation, having been communicating with the public and the nature of the OE versus the alignment of that particular indicator, how that weighs. And I think out of that discussion came this potential craving to maybe revisit just how we use language around monitoring. So thank you for the pieces that were shared, even within that meeting, that was a catalyst to capture some notes. And again, John, thank you so much for taking some time to kind of summarize and capture a few of the sentiments. So I'll actually turn it over to you if you want to just give a few insights as to what we may be grappling with, thanks to your kind of reflection work in the document that you all have with you.
So basically, this document just came out of notes from our last conversation. And I tried to actually frame it in terms of like, here's a direction we might want to move in. So it's a little bit suggestive in that way, so please take that with a grain of salt. I'm not trying to tell everyone what to do, but I did want to frame the conversation. And it seemed like in our last conversation, there were some, some pretty good thoughts and ideas about what was missing and what we should do. And basically, so some of that background is laid out. Some of the specific thoughts that were brought up in the conversation in our last meeting are laid out. I tried to frame those into a guiding question that can lead this conversation. And then I also provided an example of where it seemed like some of our thoughts were going. So we can take that or leave it. Kind of color coded it, because I like color coding things. I don't want to speak for anybody, but I know that I have shared some Joe's concerns about how our language doesn't always fit our intent around these monitoring reports. And so in these examples, I tried to get language that aligns better with our intent. And we can talk about it and figure out where we want to go from there. I think the two particular problems that have been brought to light that I would reframe for everybody is, one, the language of compliance or not compliance seems to be tripping us up because it doesn't align with the language of operational expectations, our expectations being met or not met. This is something that Joe brought up last time, but I thought was fairly useful. And then within that, we can look at, you know, how much are we approving individual indicators? Are we actually approving whether or not they meet or don't meet expectations? Or are we just working towards an overall assessment of the overall OE? One of the things that I brought up in our last conversation is that we have to remember that we are staying focused on the overall OE language, not the individual indicator language when we approve something. So then it becomes very important to think about how do we weight individual indicators in our thoughts about the whole operational expectation. Okay, so that's enough of me talking. If anybody has any questions, go ahead and ask us, we can start. You know, that's a workshop, right?
Yeah, yeah. So questions, initial thoughts, discussion, fully open for.
I can start. One of the things I did was look at the actual monitoring report that we did at the last meeting and looked at the language on there. And I found several examples of things that were tying me up, including like, it actually says on the monitoring report for these indicators, we know we will be compliant when these things happen. Like basically saying, this is de facto how we have defined compliance. And I think that's one of the problems is we see all the time indicators that aren't meant for a variety of reasons, that it's not an indication of whether or not we're in compliance with that overarching OE or not. And that's why I like the idea of kind of taking that language out in some way of the monitoring report itself and then shifting the whole conversation, like John said, to a question about that top level operational expectation. And then the question of, I mean, are these our expectations? Were they met or not? And those indicators can be evidence that are submitted that we can consider in our evaluation of whether or not the expectation was met. But you could fail an indicator and still meet our expectation for how that OE was handled. And so, and I think, I think John's right on the money that the confusing part is the language we have chosen is what is tying us in knots. So the solution is to change the language.
So one of the words that I just want to add is that I kind of, you know, Joe had suggested me ask, like, are they either met or not met? And I actually expanded it to like four criteria, maybe to poke at Joe a little bit so that we can have like a healthier discussion around it. But the language of expectations being met or not allows us to more logically have other criteria than just yes or no, which is maybe useful.
I like the idea of having met and not met, having a black and white for the indicators. But I like the idea of them having the indicators as evidence towards the overarching OE. John, if I'm understanding this, if you're, I think you were saying that having like the absolute criteria at the top level would make for hard conversations where some people want something lost. Am I, can you, I'm not sure I see it the same way, but I don't know if I'm understanding.
No, I think we see it exactly the same way because I would say what you just said, what I said, that having the black and white met or not met at the kind of indicator or at the bullet point level of each of these, like 6.1, 6.2, whatever it is, is fine. But at the top level OE, if it's black and white, that might force us into categories where the conversation, we need to be able to parse out kind of what Joe was saying. Like sometimes they're not met for reasons and we want to highlight that. So that's why I said in the kind of sub example in there, that maybe it's best to go with black and white at an indicator level, but then when we're talking about the overall OE, then we're saying, you know, it can be something like exceeds, means reasonable progress or not met, something like that. And I tried to lay out that these might be all the options. And so what I was saying in that last bullet point you brought up is kind of exactly what you said, where like, this would be great at the lower level, but at the upper level, it might box us in a little way where we can't. You know, I was thinking back to OE3, you know, then we're back having this, did we not meet expectations here because this was a thing? Or did we meet expectations, but then this other thing did? Or, you know, anyway, do you see what I'm, I think we're saying the same.
Yeah, I think we are evident.
I think the OE3 is a good example. I think if we switch to just expectations met or not met for each of the indicators, that'd be easy. We'd say not met for that one indicator.
Yeah.
But I also think if we just had two options, met or not met for the overarching, like our assessment of the entire OE, that'd be easy too. We'd say met because it was like, we, even though there's a not met on one of those indicators, if we've gotten rid of, we'll, we'll know we are compliant when we pass all of these, then we can choose as a board to even, to give as much weight or not to any single indicator.
That's kind of what I think too. And so I think somewhat we can think that I'm leaning towards that.
So leaning toward keeping still a, just a true choice overall.
Because I think that allows the board then to have the nuanced discussion and also give individual weight to where different indicators fall in what we, as a board collectively, find to be the most important, but.
My worry with having more than two options, which I think is why John said he was needle leading with that, is having meets expectations and exceeds expectations. I'm back to not knowing what the difference is between those. And administration might be left thinking if they only get a meets, it's like a B minus or something, you know, like, and I don't, I don't want that.
Well, and that.
Fast fail.
And that kind of relates to like standards based reading, right? If you don't define what exceeds is, then having it makes things complex if there's no actual attainable category.
Which I guess is a good point. I'd be much more open to a conversation of more than two options if we actually did define.
Right.
And then, then maybe my criticism goes away.
I mean, it could just be a distinction of what exactly happened, meets all expectations or meets all expectations except 6.1. I mean, it could actually just be not a checkbox, an actual description of what we agreed.
Which is kind of what we've gotten toward the meaning issue, is some sort of narrative that captures the dialogue, which I think is going to be super valuable with any of this. And I appreciate the piece of just that any one indicator doesn't have to be the determining, the determining factor of the overall. And it didn't feel that way when we had to do this with OE3 because of the compliance language. We even had this conversation, right? Did the responsive leadership meet what we would expect 100%? So even just the change of acknowledging this as an expectations met versus a compliance, I think really does reframe how it's approached in a way that hopefully really captures the essence of the overall operational expectation. Thoughts from leadership as we're discussing this as a part of what impacts your work as well?
Thank you. So there's two, two ways I guess I want to approach this is when we left the last meeting around OE3 and just listened to the conversation, we, from an administrative standpoint, we left the space not understanding what the benchmark of accountability was and trying to understand that. And so that, that was a concern of not, of making sure that from a leadership point, I, we weren't leading, trying to hit a moving target, if that makes sense. So just having really good solidarity around, around that piece would be, would be extremely helpful. I'm not sure if I misheard the, or the, one of the comments, or I took one of the comments the wrong way, when, when there was discussion about you have to hit every indicator to meet compliance, which is a, I think a task that, you know, when you think about OE4, for example, OE4 by itself has 24 indicators. But to say we would, if we're, for not 24 to 24, then we're not compliant, it would be hard for, you know, that would, that would be hard to say, you know, how is that not compliant with the policy? And then finally, what just came up in the conversation today, I don't know that we have always and that we'll take accountability for as well, really taken us back to what the original policy statement is. Because we get so deep into the indicator work that we never bring that back to what we're trying to prove in the case of OE3 as an example, because it's the most recent one. And that situation was superintendent maintained organizational culture that treats parents and members of the community respecting and courtesy. We got, rightfully so, into a deep discussion around a, an area of confidential, confidential information that was unfortunately dispersed for staff. And we never took it back to, well, what is this policy actually asking us, which is actually not about staff information, it's about parent information and community information. But we also wanted to recognize that our staff are also community members and that violation of the compliance was significant and needed to be talked about publicly and shared, shared with our staff and shared, shared with the board because we don't want to have any secrets of that kind. So just a long way of stating twofold, if we, whatever we walk away with, if we understand that, that is the benchmark and what we need to do as administration, being able to have that target solidified and understood so we can provide the best amount of evidence as possible. And just to kind of plead, if it's a situation where every single indicator has to be met, I just don't see that as a reasonable task to be able to meet it.
But I would push back on that and wonder if we have so many indicators that it wouldn't be reasonable to meet them all. What we're saying is the, these are our expectations. Like we will know the district is running well when these things are met. If these things aren't met, then there's a problem. If we have indicators that are. If we have indicators that are kind of unnecessary, maybe we need to take a look at that. If like this one can be met, or if there's so many that it's impossible to satisfy them all, then there's some that are superfluous then.
Or, is there a possible or with that?
Yeah.
That if it's high achieving, right? Putting these indicators forward to try, try to show a high level of functioning of the district, but there's just things that happen that potentially impact it. So I don't know that, at least in my, my view of it, that it may not be, like, let's use 3.1.
Yeah.
A data breach isn't superfluous, I have a hard time saying that word.
No, but I think if we're saying when there's like 24 indicators, do all 24 actually, you know, I'm just, I'm curious if we're.
Or do all 24 have to weigh the same in the discussion?
No, I don't think, I don't think that would be, anything that would be required for any of our.
I see your point though, as a separate point, I think that probably less is more with indicators overall, I think, but I don't know if it's beyond the scope of this conversation.
It's an interesting one that.
But I remember the keynote speaker from Rashid at the annual convention, in his book, he was just talking to me about how a lot of school districts have way too many indicators and we have to simplify them. And I agree with him. When I was looking at the first run of the OEs that we've done together, it just seemed really noisy, right? And I think that separate to that, it's probably worthwhile for us to revisit, to make sure that we can simplify where possible, because it would be a bit easier for Dr. Clary and the administration. I don't have enough knowledge to tell you exactly what OE, I can use an example as a noise, but I think overall we have a ton of indicators. But more specific for this conversation, I kind of like having the language of exceeds expectations, meets expectations, reasonable progress for the, the reason why, because I'm thinking about, okay, we're talking a lot about makes the work easy for the board, what makes the work easy for the administration. But I also want to think about what makes it easy and approachable to read for families and parents that are wondering, hey, what happened at this meeting with this OE that I really care about? And I just think, I'm not married so much with having to use that, but if, as long as we can ensure that it's easy for non-board and administrators to know what's happening and something was met, but if there's important information to be learned by concerned parent or community member, that that's clear, that that's not under that, it shouldn't, that these things shouldn't be written away that's only clear for us, administration, that we're considering the parents and community members that might be interested in reading through some of these themselves, or, or really quickly finding information. Recently Jen addressed a concern, she was able to really effectively pinpoint a meeting that we had a pretty thorough discussion about an important matter. And I thought that was super helpful, because I was able to go to Jen's email, pinpoint the information, and this apparent, wow, this is great, I see the conversation was had. And I didn't realize it, right? Because all the parents aren't joining these meetings, right? But I think that's where I'm coming from, is I like this additional language, because I think it might make it easier for laypeople on the board or administration.
I think I'm left wondering a little bit if we, I like the less is more, I know Joe, you kind of shared the idea too of indicators. My worry a little bit, I appreciate the, the organic way that letting us decide what indicators weigh into the overall OE, I think that is of high value. But does that make it unsure for you of what the target is? Do you get what I'm saying? Like allowing ourselves the space to process, you know, yeah, this indicator had some troubles and maybe wasn't met, but overall, according to the policy, this feels like we're meeting expectations, is that grayness complex from the request that you just shared of knowing what the criteria is? Because in a lot of ways, that makes the criteria a bit more organic in the moment based on what the data is that's being presented. Am I saying that in a way that makes sense? I think I tried to elevate a question in your direction with that, but.
Yeah, that makes sense. We understand the, the target, whether the information's good or bad, at least we know what we're, what we're, what we're presenting. So it's not about trying to make it look good for the purpose of the target, it's just understanding what the, what the goal is, what the, what the, what the target is. I think right, right now, it is really been, been fluid. And so when it's fluid, we, it's hard to say, well, we prepared the report in this way, and now the fluidity of how it's processed has, has shifted. And that, that's part, that part is difficult for, for, for leadership to, to really understand how to, how to get better as a target helps.
I would say, when it comes to the report, I think it's, one thing that, I think superintendent and administration should indicate whether each indicator is compliant or not compliant. But I think the overall OE is really just the board to decide. Like I don't think you, you would weigh in on that.
Then we don't, we have, we.
Yeah, we started shifting that.
Yes. But I wasn't sure if that's what you were saying, is, maybe I wasn't understanding what you were saying is.
No, I was saying that our, how, how OE was processed and, and discussed, and the final outcome was decided has been fluid, whereas the talking points for one OE has not been consistent with the talking points for the, for another OE. So it's, it's hard to say, well, OE9, for example, I'm just throwing it out there, OE9 passed, all right? And then we have very similar situation with OE3, why are, why are the talking points different between, between the, the two OEs? And then again, the discussion went back to, well, not every indicator was, not every indicator, or one indicator was probably not compliant, and that was the justification for the whole OE not being compliant. Whereas we started, when we started years ago, and I, and no one wants to go back to when we started years ago, trust me, we were almost just adding up, you know? If we had odd numbers, how many were, you know, how many were, were positive, how many were negative, and then going there, which that wasn't, I don't want to go back to that either, because I don't think that really justifies. But again, I'll go back to my original statement is that I, and how it's presented, we have to be accountable for that as well. We weren't bringing the conversation back to what is the intent of this policy. I want to say, what is the OE asking? And I keep in the conversation there, once we got into indicator world, we stayed there.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
And never got out of there.
Okay, thank you. I think that, that makes sense.
So, so what you're saying is that if we're going to say, we want you to like do some sort of executive summary, or something that bridges the gap from indicator world to the overarching OE world, where we're going to make our estimation of whether or not things have been met or not, that represents a shift for you, right? That. Yes, because if you know something, the executive summary, I always put above such and such number of indicators.
Mm-hmm.
You can also say what, I'm like, how, you can say what you think the relatively important is of the indicators.
And maybe tell us why some should be weighed. For example, if we go back to the one we just did with the data breach, that could be in, because not all indicators are going to be equal seriousness. But that could be one where it's, we feel like we are, while we are not in compliance with this particular indicator, we still feel like we're in compliance with the overarching.
Expectations, I do like that.
With the overarching OE, because we did this, we did this, we did this, and we'll be updating the board at, you know, a later date, something like that, like explain why one indicator would be, should be.
Considered to be that one.
Not a make or break indicator.
Yeah, or that there's corrective action already, you know, in play, that little immediate problem, I don't know. I mean.
I, I understand, because there are some, there's some powerful indicators out there that.
Like if you miss it.
You're asking, it should, it should.
Yeah.
Like if we, we fill our audit.
Yeah, that would be, we know what that is.
Yeah, that OE might be a trouble, right?
That's a problem.
Right, yeah.
But I think that would simplify it for everyone, you know, anyone out there that's listening, you must, I'm not even sure we tie it back to the OE itself.
Yeah.
Because I agree, a lot of times you get lost in using indicators.
Yeah.
It's a hard one.
Yeah.
Didn't we say about that?
Yeah. I think also though, you know, I think we've tried to bridge that gap a little bit, that the meets expectations or in compliance with exceptions, which I know Joe loves, and he's going to miss this, but it, you know, but I think that, that was trying to address that not every indicator is the same, you know? But I think that ended up letting, you know? So we take that out of, then it, it requires the board to have a bigger conversation about the specifics, but I think that can also be where you weigh in with your interpretation of the weight of that particular indicator that may not have been in compliance, met expectations.
When we first started all this, I remember having several conversations where we talked about the importance of having robust discussions at the board table, and, and the, the role that those robust discussions have in bridging the gap between the minutia of what goes into running the schools effectively and public perception of what's going on. And that we needed to find ways to promote those more robust discussions at the board level. My feeling now, after getting some of this conversation, and actually my feeling beforehand, even though I was poking at Joel, that is that if we are going to keep the board's focus on the high level OE, at the end of the day, that's what we're voting on. And all of the indicators and stuff is basically just evidence that the administration team is using to inform us and inform the public of what's, what's been going on. Then it does work to have that you either meet it or you don't meet it. But like we do with our results, we're going to record that in like a brief, quick narrative that then gets approved and consent agenda the next time, that says, the board says that, oh, operational expectation three is met, even though, you know, blah, 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 because it's not a make or break indicator. And that, you know, we all see that, and it's, you know, consent agenda, boom, it gets put in the record, that's put into the record. I think that is a more, I understand how that's more of a gray area, because it's not like, I mean, we're not in essence saying, here's the goalpost for the overall OE. We're saying, you tell us what your goalpost was to all your indicators, and, you know, then we'll have that discussion in public and, you know, we'll approve or not approve, but also then the community has a chance to see through that public record, you know, oh, this is why, and this is what's going on.
I totally agree with John. I think going to that binary question, it definitely introduces some subjectivity into it, but that's, that's what's going to allow us to have the robust discussion that John's talking about. If it's so rote, that it's just like indicator, 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 there's no room for us to discuss and have maybe potentially even differences of opinion about things. Yeah, no, you're. Oh, okay. And, and my, my overall goal is really to simplify the process, and that's because like, the way my own like pedantic brain works, I get bogged down in the language, and I can't get past it when it says like, we know we will be compliant when, and then it lists 25 different things, some of which we didn't do. And I think that there's, there's value in simplicity, and there's nothing more simplistic than here's our expectation, did you meet it this year, yes or no? But it's very simple.
I think that's one thing that I, when we are looking at, as we go through the process, if we're finding indicators that were like not in compliant, but it didn't change things, those are the indicators that we look at to find out are they actually necessary to meet. You know, I'm looking, I just pulled in like 4.1, and there's three indicators under 4.1 about percentage of staff who complete surveys. I mean, and that's where, does that advance us? I mean, if we missed that, I wouldn't care. I mean, so that's where I kind of wonder, can we.
Yeah. Or you're more, you're more concerned with how that speaks to the overarching thing?
Yeah, but at least 50% of staff that voluntarily resigned or retired, complete an exit survey. Interesting information. But like, if you didn't have 50%, would I be like, yeah, you just totally didn't have a good OE?
OE fail.
Yeah, yeah, OE failed, this is a bad, you know, culture and climate for the staff. Because that's, the overall is operational expectations for personnel administration. And just, when you go back to the OE, I think some of the indicators get in the weeds with the board. I do think it's interesting information, but I don't think that 35, 65, 85, is that meaningfully different to me?
The part that I think could be really interesting, and partially I think this is because we've like lived in this now, so many iterations and so many spaces to have these conversations to keep getting into a point where, you know, the system is doing what we wish it to do, is, you know, the document that we're now kind of using as guidance for board and leadership on what we want to do with the data that's presented, feel like in theory, that becomes the framework that allows the board to chew on whatever data you're going to show up with. That we don't have these list of indicators that are locked in at all times. If it's OE4 day, what are you bringing to the table, knowing these are the questions and the things that we're going to use to help guide the value of that evidence? I mean, I know it sounds really wide open, but just the less is more, like how do we really hone in?
I think that's the board's responsibility to say, does the board find this indicator necessary to evaluate whether or not the superintendent has created a culture, you know, staff? But that's, I mean, I think that's what we would, at each point, if we're coming up with indicators that were like, this one really doesn't lean us towards knowing.
Knowing.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, I'm being specific about this one, just because it's, you know, pulled up, but I think that to have three indicators about climate particip, or survey participation, again, interesting information, but if you missed that, I wouldn't feel like this is now not in compliance, which makes me think, is the survey that big of a deal for us to be? What do we need?
So you'll appreciate this, Meredith. So I used to drive Meredith crazy. Still do. So like, now I drive Jen and Dr. Cuddy crazy, but I used to drive her crazy, because we, you know, enacted this sort of governance model, and then we spent a year going through all these, where we had to vote on whether or not we thought the definitions, interpretations, and the indicators were reasonable. So we were pre-doing the work that I laid out in that results, like this is our score sheet for results, we're like asking questions about like, is this, is this evidence connected to the argument that's being made? We were pre-doing that work by saying to the board, this is reasonable or not. Now, every week, we looked at these. I would email in like questions about words, or things I'd want to change, or then after they would vote on the entire next year, so the second year after that, every time they would come up, I would email Meredith and be like, hey, I'm not sure I like this. Like this, I'm in essence reopening the conversation and saying, is this reasonable or not? And you got a little fresh, you get fresh, this is a lot, because you'd be like, we're not evaluating if this is reasonable now, now we're connecting you with this, you know, like calm down, stop trying to change everything. That is moving the goalposts when you're doing that. So what I'm, what I'm getting at is, if we look at this process as a whole, then these questions about whether or not the indicators need to be simplified, whether or not it makes sense to have the survey data that equals this thing, those are questions of reasonableness that we can challenge the admin team on if we want to reel up those things up. But they're, the responsibility of the admin team to write the indicators, to write the interpretations of things, all we do is write the OE. And frustratingly beat that back in my head at one link at a time. And so now I'm in a place where I go, okay, those are all great questions, but they're not really our questions. So when we get to this point where we're trying to evaluate if it's been met or not met, based on all these indicators, and maybe one indicator is more important or not, we might get to a hiccup where as a board member, an individual board member might say, hey, I'm not sure if it's reasonable to use these bits of evidence to make this point. But that's not a question of approving the OE, that's a question of challenging the admin to come up with their own language, their own goalposts. So what I would say is, those are great questions, but right now, I think. But right now, I think when we're laying out the criteria that we're using to judge our own policy language, that's a different question. And then we maybe have to say like, wait a minute, how often is it appropriate to reopen that question of reasonableness at that level? But I don't think there's question.
But I think that's, as we're talking about this, I think as we're saying, if all indicators don't need to be met to have the OE, the expectations of the OE met, that's the time for the board to maybe evaluate, let's take a look at these indicators for reasonableness again. So it's not something we would be doing now, it'd be just something as, because we've talked about, when is the time for us to look at indicators? Like when it comes up, we're like, you know what, that one wasn't in compliance and I don't think it mattered, then that would be, that would be a suggestion for us.
Which we've kind of done, right? In the middle of evaluating or monitoring, we've kind of had a, let's revisit, let's, we'd like to see an indicator come back from you, or you've done that. So I think in that process of monitoring, we tend to make those decisions.
I think we've done it informally.
Yeah.
But I mean, I think as a board, we did have to vote on whether indicators were reasonable.
Yeah.
And like, from a process standpoint, that we can, someone can make a motion to say it's not reasonable anymore. Like, and we could as a board decide that we, we want, and John's points are good one, which is that we shouldn't be doing that all the time, because that makes it really difficult, that moves the goalposts. But from a process standpoint, we can, if we ever come across something that we think isn't reasonable anymore. But I mean, I would say that's a pretty high bar.
I would have a question of like, for, you know, for Dr. Clarity, it would be harder for adding indicators as opposed to really, we don't need two indicators, we can take those off your plate for the next time. I mean, is that a different level of?
It is, and I, I think the one thing that we haven't put into the space now is, that I would like to is that the Broner School District is a drastically different place than it was four years ago, or five years ago, you know? And some of the things that we were bringing as, because we were literally trying to figure out how to build a system to get it running, so at that time, very reasonable, because that was the state of the organization that we're, that we were, where we were at. Now I think that some of them are flat out just compliance because it's there, and some of them, we really do use because it helps us keep each other accountable as an administrator too, that we, we believe in this, do this, and we want to make sure that we're, we're adherent to. So it's a, yes, to your question.
Yeah.
That removing some of those that organizationally, we just aren't in that same space anymore.
Yeah.
I guess I, I don't know where the time and space for that conversation happens. It would be a good question.
So I don't think that needs to be as big and formal a conversation as it has been in the past, because I think what I hear you saying is that we were going from having like very little institutional framework as a district, to now we've got a lot of the framework, maybe not as much as we want, but we've got a lot of it there. So I think it's a lot easier for us to step back and say, we don't need all of the formality that we used to have. I would suggest that you need a majority of the board members to vote, to, to vote to like challenge you as our principal administrator on the reasonableness of one of your things, and then you'd have to come back and report to us on that. But I would also suggest that you, as our one point of contact at the district, can bring suggested changes to us at will, like willy nilly.
That could be in prior executive summary.
Yeah, and just be like, I want to vote on that, I want to do this, I want to change this.
I want to actually go back to what you said, I think that's really important, especially for new board members. We had nothing like this in place. I mean, literally, nothing. So everything that was built here was built in a vacuum, that really it's important that that history is, is recognized in the fact that some of these things may really have some, you know, minutia, because we weren't monitoring any of it. And so it served a purpose, it served a really important purpose at the time, and we may have grown out of that, that purpose. So, and I think there's also a getting, you know, familiar with how we use this, but I think we can recognize we have maybe a few less years of our governing processes.
I think it would be useful if, when we do monitoring of OE reports for us as a board and with Dr. Clarity at the end, to have a conversation about the indicators.
Yeah.
And maybe not every time in perpetuity when we do it, but at least for the next monitoring cycle, to go through all the OEs and say, okay, let's talk about these indicators. Do we really, are, do we feel like these are reasonable, do we think they're returning on value? And then I think we're going to, I think it'll be very rare for us to find one where we want new indicators. I think more likely than not, we're going to be axing half of them that we have. And that's going to make, that's going to, again, simplify everything.
I would suggest though, that like this process, if we're going to do this over the next year, so you know, I'd say a year starts with the annual meeting coming up, over the next year, if we go through and monitor it according to the board plan, and we add that to the end, where every time we're going to ask, are these indicators still reasonable? That can be like an audit procedure at the board level that happens every few years or every sol- it's not a regular thing. I would differentiate that from admin being able to come and suggest changes whenever.
Yep.
Because I wouldn't want future boards to be doing that all the time as they go.
Yeah.
And I think it would be best practice to be like, every three years, every five years, whenever we line them up to.
And just put in a clarification, just so it's that, you know, for the integrity of the team, just because it's a hard indicator to me, it's not a reason to turn it, not the reason to bring to you, because we can't necessarily hit it. But I just wanted to put that, it was like, I'm not trying to erase the indicators because they, you know, we didn't hit it that year.
And I think that comes back to the whole reason we're having this discussion. If you have things that aren't met, great, those have to be in there in part of the discussion, but then how we utilize that information with an overall vote, I think the language and the way we've talked about how that process can look can shift immensely to reflect the holistic view of the data that's been presented.
I mean, and quite honestly, the way that, and appreciate the way that we're looking at results policies now are making so many of OE ten obsolete, because all those there now live in the way that we're looking at it.
Results. I think anybody who's ever like adopted or like had to organize themselves from scratch, right? You start by overdoing it, you put everything in that day timer, you know, every note in your to-do list, like I've got to remember to go to the bathroom, I'm going to put that on there, everything, every little thing. And then you do that for a year, and you're like, oh, I can leave this stuff out, it's, you know, habitual night. Anybody that's ever done that process, which is probably almost all of us, you recognize by like year three or four, you're doing way less to organize yourself, because you've built those habits in institutionally in your lifestyle. And that's, in essence, what's happened here, is we did all the things, we've done that for three years now, it's built into the culture, it's there in other ways that are actually harder to, much harder to like affect or affect now. So yeah, let's focus more on, let's spend our time more on the things that matter. So.
So, yeah, can we try to summarize where we are?
Can I take a stab at it?
Please, I've taken some notes.
It sounds like there is broad support to say that we're going to shift our language to meets or does not meet expectations, that we're just going to keep that binary, and that while admin might indicate for us where indicators have been met or not met, the overarching OE is where we make our decision. And that's not going to be suggested for us, other than like, here's the summary, here's what we think, then it's going to be up for the board to discuss and summarize, vote on, canonize it in language, and go that way. Is that where we're feeling like we're at? And that as a part of that, we will be doing a board audit of indicators this upcoming year, and that that audit is going to be a once in a few years thing.
That was my own little.
So my own, again, from a semantic standpoint, nothing, well, maybe in some ways, I also am hearing that within each sub-part of a policy, we potentially eliminate the we are in compliant when statement.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I.
Especially if we're not going to use compliance language anymore, I don't know that that statement is helpful.
Like we also call indicators superintendent indicators of compliance.
Yeah, or just, right, and I don't even think that needs a subheading, right? All it is, is, so I just pulled up OE nine to have just an example in front of me. So what I'm wondering, and maybe this is either another board member that can help me or Nate, we're not rewriting the policy, so by changing the potential verbiage we're using for vote, does this require a board vote that we're agreeing to make this language change in terms of saying meets expectations or does not meet expectations?
I think that.
Or is it something we can just agree on because it's not part of the policy? Am I phrasing that question correctly? Does this require a board vote to change what we're suggesting is changed in these OEs?
I think it would require a vote, but I don't think it requires like a second reading like the policy, because that language isn't.
Right, so that's kind of what I'm saying, like if we've kind of got an agreement here, we.
It's not included in our GCs? Yeah, it's not included in our GCs, or in our.
It's not, I was reading through to try to find it.
Or what about four superintendent GCs?
And the BSRs?
Five.
Thank you for checking that. Because then my, I guess my follow-up question is, we have OE two, which is a fairly straightforward OE to monitor coming up.
That's a bad indicator.
Great. But is this?
It does.
That's great.
It did a 2.2, because I don't know why, I proposed it this way, it says, two staff members located in district office reception area have copies of the OE two report, but we have two central offices now.
Ah.
And there's more than two people there.
Then there's more than two people there. But see, well, you, you didn't know what you didn't know by saying two.
No, we only did it.
And now we get to decide how heavily we weigh that piece of evidence.
I'm not sure if I understand the question, if you're asking whether you want to vote to change the process of the policy?
No, we're not changing the substance of the policy.
Correct.
There is verbiage on the monitoring report.
Right, the top of, yeah. At the top of the monitoring report right now, it says, compliance, compliance if except, right, not compliant. We're talking about rewriting that language. So it's not changing, but it, I mean, it's like lives in the policy document, do you kind of get what I'm saying? I feel like I want to take a vote on it, but.
We're not changing the policy.
Yeah.
We're not changing how we.
Read that for us.
Yeah, anything just to have a record.
Yes.
Yeah.
But it's not a policy.
Right. So we don't do a second reading, we can just do this now. Because then I'm wondering with OE two, then if we just move forward and make those adjustments when that OE comes to us, so we can start to live with it right away with, for the most part, an OE that's fairly straightforward.
Okay.
So we're capturing for the sake of a vote.
Do we have action for that?
So proposing that the we know we are compliant when will get taken out of every, I just want to summarize what I think I'm hearing we're doing to change the document, just to make sure we're all on the same page. So that's something that I heard, is that that piece will be gone, we know we are compliant when. And at the top, each indicator will say met or not met, which will be filled out by administration. And the top of the document, the overarching OE will also say meets expectations or expectations not met, but that will be left for the board to vote on, along with our summary document, which will capture the nature of the conversation.
Since we don't have action on that, on the agenda tonight, I think we just can do consensus of the board, informal, but I do think we need to have a vote on it, because it's completely approved in by the board.
You can take a motion to modify the agenda overall.
Since the agenda already has like this workshop, I think that's sufficient.
You can just add action.
People might take action on it.
Okay. So we could take action within this topic of, without commending it, okay? Did I summarize what I, I think I've said is?
We can do that.
Yeah, thank you for, I mean, right, because this one, we're doing this so organically, it helps me to make sure I know what we're doing.
And this is a little bit semantic, but let's just call them indicators, not indicators of compliance, if any difference to compliance, we can get out of the report.
Yes, yes.
And just from a visual standpoint, I think, since we're talking so much about tying that binary decision to what the overarching OE says, let's put that at the top of the report, so like that's the first thing you can see when you open up a report.
This is the OE.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that we really have got to weigh from the OE.
I absolutely feel guilty if that is a personal perspective, especially reflecting on OE three. Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I think OE two is perfect, it was a fire.
Yeah. Anything I've missed? So all the pieces, every word of compliant is eliminated, met or not met within every indicator coming to us from administration in terms of the suggested checkbox there. The very top of the report has the OE listed very explicitly, the overarching OE, and the top is going to say meets expectations or expectations not met, which will be left blank when the report comes to us. So our motion to approve all of those changes to our OE monitoring reports.
So moved.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
One Carlos sitting by here. All those in favor of approving the changes to our OE monitoring reports as suggested, say go thyme with aye. Aye. Any opposed? Fabulous. Great discussion. Thank you, everyone. I feel like, to your point, Dr. Clarity, we've just, we've been living in the work, these changes make sense. I don't feel like it's a reflection of any incompetency by any member of this team, it's having done the work and figuring out, it makes sense.
I think this will make it a lot more transparent to the general public as well.
I agree. The way we get to talk about data, I think will be much more impactful. All right. So with that, we're going to adjourn to closed session under Wisconsin statute 19.85 sub 1 sub C to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically to discuss the contract of the superintendent. We'll move to a roll called vote to shift into closed session. One Carlos.
Aye.
Christopher.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
John.
Yes.
Corby.
Yes.
Joe.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. We'll adjourn to closed session, we will take a short recess then, so we can kind of just organize around internally, and then we'll regroup for closed sessions.